Mary, you can sit in here if you want.
Oh, yeah.
You're welcome. Okay. Hey, welcome, everybody. Today's July 5th. This is our weekly county commissioner meeting. This time, I please ask everyone to rise, say the pledge.
Sherry, you want to lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Sherry. Everybody get a chance to look at the agenda. Entertaining motion to approve unless you have an amendment.
Move that we approve the agenda for July 5th.
No, I'll second that.
Who did second on favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. We'll get right on down our agenda. These are action items. The first one is the meeting minutes of June 27th. Everybody gets.
Changes, Doug already changed them, so.
That it?
Okay, I make a motion, we approve the minutes of June 22nd.
Twenty seventh?
Twenty seventh, I'm sorry.
I'll second that.
Who did second on favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, in your packet from Gabby is a bid for the next agenda item, which is also an action item. This is the Elkhorn bid for the four each pens at the Valley County Fair.
Which PDF is that one, Mr. Chairman?
What's that?
It's the professional services agreement.
It's kind of the bottom right-hand corner. And I think this was for.
Oh, here we go, down at the bottom. Okay, because I get confused sometimes because I can't really, it says PDF 39, it's PDF 40.
Yeah.
I don't, you know, which is which, so.
This is for light grating and drain installation to eliminate ponding water between the sheep pens. The total cost is $1,733.20.
So in looking at this, I mean, I know that four each had asked for like a valley drain in there, which would be concrete. I'm not seeing concrete. This is just a regrade and putting gravel down.
There is a pipe that's going to be installed that's going to drain to the east.
Some more of a French drain.
Towards the railroad tracks, yeah, French drain, I don't.
Where is it? So you might explain just a little bit more about where this project and what it's doing.
Um. The two red buildings down at the fairgrounds, you got one to steer. On the north side of that, they put up pins for the sheep. Between that building and the next building, there's a big low spot there.
I think we talked once before about.
If it rains or if, you know, something, they end up having to drag all the sheep through the mud.
Right.
And they don't want to do that, and so this guy is going to regrade it, put a drain in it with a pipe, so drains back to the east to the railroad track.
That's, okay, good.
Hopefully that'll help.
Yeah, appreciate that, yeah.
And Doug, do you remember who's, where we getting the money to do this? This out of billions and grounds?
Yes, this will just be paid out of the billions and grounds department.
And you have the contract there?
I don't, but I thought.
We do have it.
Scott was going to come, but I will print it off.
But maybe I'm a little early.
He's not, he's on his way or something. So where we paying for it out of?
Buildings and grounds.
Buildings and grounds, okay.
Doug, do we still have some, um, don't we still have a little bit of funding in the fair board? In the fair line?
Uh, let me check.
We do, I think we take it out of there.
You know, I thought we put some mixture in that. Fairgrounds maintenance stuff. Did we put another $10,000 or something in there?
We did for next year's budget.
Next year's budget.
But I think that the COVID, there was one year where we didn't release all those funds because I didn't have a fair. And so I, I think we still have a little bit of money in there. And if we do, then we should be spending that on.
Well, it's really, will help, I think, even if, uh, you know, the road department driving through there, that kind of stuff. So it, it, it's still the same money in the end, but doesn't matter.
Seventeen hundred and thirty-three is not a real deal breaker, it's just getting where to get from.
No. Wherever Doug recommends. Morning. You guys, come on in, have a seat.
Good morning, everyone.
Happy July 5th.
Yeah, we made it through another July 4th.
Yeah.
Commissioners, I think we, as Commissioner Mopin indicated, we do have an expense line in fairgrounds, repairs, maintenance, buildings and fixtures that we can definitely take it out of. So that probably makes the most sense for this year, for that project is just to be paid out of nine, which is fairgrounds and buildings.
Okay, so I'd entertain a motion to approve this contract.
Move to approve the Elkhorn Softscapes bid for the four each pens and pay that out of the fairground budget line.
I'll second that.
Who did second on favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. Now, we have to wait about eight minutes for our next agenda item, which is Idaho Headwaters. So if you need a break, this will be the time.
Um, did you guys get that email I sent to you, we're going to be discussing next? And I apologize for sending it so late.
Advisory Council?
On the impact area in McCall.
Oh, no.
It was last night, so if you get a chance to read it, we are going to be addressing it. I apologize for sending it late. Need to clarify a couple of things with Cindy, so I think she'll be in here to discuss that also. And I'll make sure of that, actually, she and Brian both.
Grab that contract, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
So Rick, were you guys crazy over the weekend?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah.
I went to Nampa and we got out of here before the roads closed for the parade and then came back. And it was busy, but it wasn't as busy as I thought, but we didn't get back to like seven o'clock last night, so.
Yeah, well, I don't think there was many people in town this, this Fourth of July.
No, not as many?
No, I didn't, I didn't think so, just driving around town last night.
We didn't have the stream or the cars where you get caught in lines. Never seen it like that.
Oh, I don't know, like, you know, if it's gas prices or the threat of rain, maybe. They did say it was good rain, thunder showers and stuff.
It's kind of weird, because, I mean, most people couldn't stay for the fireworks last night anyway. You know, they all would have had to have gone home yesterday to go to work today, probably.
Right.
So it was kind of a weird, weird day, but, you know.
We're, we're still doing a lot of business.
It's busy. And that's just, there's just more people living up here, you know?
Don't you remember when we have to have that magistrate vote in?
Uh, the 15th of July?
We got a little more time.
Is the date that we'll be doing the. At least the selection of who will be interviewed.
Interviewed, yeah.
You heard anything about Lake Cascades quality?
I haven't heard anything in the last couple of days, no. I suspect it's getting a little better, but, um, I didn't smell it this morning like you've been, which was last week.
Go down to the radio.
Nope, I stayed home and guarded the fort on Fourth of July. We had dogs chasing cows. Four-wheelers were wearing out the roads.
Should have been there, but my husband was adamant I was going to his family get together.
Best way to see the, see the parade is actually be in it.
Yeah, well, I should have walked, but I didn't.
Thank you, sir.
But we saw family we hadn't seen in probably 25 years from Florida, so it's a good thing. I updated our calendar. We're getting to vacation time. If you guys are taking vacation at all, make sure you get it on our calendar.
I'll be gone for the next six months.
No, you won't. That was a good try, though.
So who are you going to put in charge, Earl?
Whoever shows up.
So we just make sure that we, we document our vacations.
You know, this was a part-time job when I started 10 years ago. And I have 600 acres of hay ground I got to get in here before it gets over arriving.
I don't have anything.
Can't seem to even get to it.
Did have a full day deal going on, but I wasn't even going to take one. It's, looks like falling through one of the guys.
Somebody come in, Rick, and take my position so I could go do hay, because I don't want to do this, I want to go do the hay.
Something, but I don't know yet.
I can tell you, Earl loves that hay. We've had some phone calls with you on your tractor work and business.
It's hard.
And you loved it, you're like, I'm out here and I'm just driving back and.
Yeah, I see elk and birds and ox and all kinds of interesting things out there.
It's time to cut, isn't it?
I've got about, I don't know, 80, 90 acres already cut. Just got the baler out last night at six o'clock and got it fired up and working.
Don't worry, it's a break.
I always usually go out and break something first, just to get it over with, you know? Okay, and we're going to move on down our agenda, and our next item is an action item. This is discussion decision on Idaho Headwaters Economic Study Group request. And I really appreciate the, the mail out you guys sent, Jeff. It's, I think it's, some things in there I agree with, some things I don't. Um, I know that there was, and maybe Sherry could step in here, there was a group from Stibnite that was supposed to have done some of this, but I don't know where to find that information. Tried to find it.
So, and I apologize for not being here last Monday, I had to have some medical work done.
We'll be addressing that, Earl.
So do you want them to do their presentation and then we?
Yeah, if you guys want to go ahead, we kind of know what you're asking for. And the last time I asked them to send us kind of some questions that I thought were, were relevant to what they were trying to get to the bottom of. And some of it I was able to find in the EIS document, but a lot of it is not. It's really hard to get it out. So Deb, go ahead.
Okay, we'll get started.
Say your name for the record, too, please.
Yes, I will. Can you hear me pretty well?
Pretty well. You can tip that up if you want.
There we go. Um, good morning, Commissioners, and thank you for having us back. Um, we were here last week and, and, um, my name's Deb Faraday. Uh, I live at 315 Burns Road, McCall. So we're here today to do what you had asked us to do, which is to bring back, um, uh, some specifics on what we're asking for. And I thought I'd start out with just giving you a little bit of a background of how our group got started and why. So, um, and I'm not going to rehash over things we went over. We're going to try to keep this real sweet and, and condensed and also thorough, so that you guys will, will really get the gist of what we're asking for today. So the Idaho Headwaters Economic Study Group, uh, formed at the beginning of the year. And we have a steering committee, um, and we met to discuss a mission. And we drafted a resolution during this time. And we had many of our steering committee members approach businesses who have, and there's over 50 of them, who have become cosigners to that resolution. And you can find that on studystibnite.org. I'm going to read our mission statement, just because I think it's important to kind of set the, the, uh, the context from which we're coming from today. So, um, the Idaho Headwaters Economic Study Group uses a collaborative consensus-based model. Um, and we seek to better understand and assess the potential impacts of the Stibnite Gold Project proposal on the sustainability and greater good of our communities, our way of life and our business climate. So as stakeholders, we're committed to asking reasonable questions and obtaining high-quality economic data to inform the decisions we make about the future health of our communities and our individual and collective businesses. Um, and I'm just going to mention one thing that I think, um, we're going to be getting to here, which is so important. We're a growing valley, aren't we? I mean, it's, we're, we're really experiencing growth. And, and, um, so managing growth has become, you know, kind of a keystone responsibility for elected officials. And our city councils and our, our commissioners, um, really are, um, having to deal with this. And, and you guys have the capacity to support, request, and obtain independent socioeconomic analysis of large-scale industrial projects such as the Stibnite Gold Mining Project proposal. And with that, um, just with a little bit of background, I'm going to turn this over to Rick, who's going to speak a little bit more in-depth on this.
Thanks, Commissioners. Uh, Rick Faraday, 315 Burns Road. You've all heard us refer to the DEIS statement by Highlands about the limited economic study that was done. Uh, you, you had that in front of you, you should have it in previous stuff, so I won't go into it. Uh, McCall business owners are worried about many things that weren't studied and could affect their businesses. Uh, housing, inflaming and already severe workforce housing shortage. Wages, competing with an industrial operation that admits that a local workforce will join Perpetua, putting even more strain on our local, uh, workers, workforce. Uh, increased traffic on an already overused state highway. Stresses on our public service sector jobs, teachers, healthcare, fire, police, city, county and federal workers. Uh, what will the cost be to Valley County businesses and residents on, on infrastructure-related costs? Impacts to our, as we all know, booming economy. We have a great economy right now in Valley County. We're having trouble keeping up with it, so what will that impact be? So, and, and impacts to our recreation and tourist economy that rely on recreation amenities and pristine backcountry experiences, which is we're known for. So, um, we sent a list of the things to you, you should have them in front of you, that you asked for when we were here last week. Uh, the first two items on the list are, are the primary things, we think. The high-level themes are, number one, the trends analysis. We want to know what the trends are in, in our county the last 50 years. Transitioning from a, uh, extractive, uh, economy to pretty much a tourist and second-home economy here in Valley County. And still ag, ag's still big, and we appreciate that. And then the second analysis would be, what impact would a mine have on these economies? So, um, Commissioner Mopin, we received your message stating that the economic analysis was being handled by the Stibnite Advisory Council. And we took a look at that, and Jeff, Jeff's going to respond to your statements concerning that.
Well, that wasn't, that wasn't exactly it, just for the record, so they're not doing a study right now, but I will address that, too.
Okay, all right. But, uh, time is running out on, on us, you know, making a statement and looking at what this will do to our county. So, so we continue to press you for, to, to fund an independent, non-biased study. And we'd like to see a positive action on that today. I personally believe whether we had a big mind going in or not, our economy is, is, is so worked up. It's so, it's pretty, pretty, uh, impressive economy right now that, that a study like this will be a good thing, especially the, the, uh, timeline study, the, the past analysis of the trends is, is going to, is a good thing for the county. So, whether we had a mind going in or not, I think that every once in a while, some sort of a, a trends analysis is great. So I'm going to turn it over to Jeff, and he can speak to, to the things that, uh, he's going to speak about.
Thanks.
Thanks, Rick.
Thanks, Rick. Hello again, Commissioners. My name's Jeff Abrams. I'm at 14186 Jefferson Road in McCall. So, um, thanks for sort of adjusting us, sort of setting the stage to both Rick and Deb. The analysis work that we requested of the three of you that we sent last week, and thanks for specifying your request to us so that we could address your, uh, your concerns, your questions. And that's really what today is about, is, is answering, responding to you all and your thoughts and interacting with you all. But, um, in a nutshell, what they said was that the trends analysis needs to occur. This, 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 the study needs to occur, and it's sort of, the high-level takeaways that we want to get from the analysis are this trends analysis. What are existing economies that are driving our economies right now? Not, not what they were 50 years ago, but right now. Um, we want to know what the effects on non-market impacts are, such as tourism and what the Forest Service is now calling the recreational experience, right? That's number two. Uh, we want to model adverse impact scenarios that might come to these economies. Um, we want to model impacts to government services and community services and the tax revenues that may or may not come from those activities. Uh, we want to look at the impacts of housing competition, labor competition. And, um, also, we've indicated, as per else requests, that there can be a dimension of cost sharing involved here with our business group. But we hope that you appreciate the fact that we came to you requesting this publicly-commissioned study to eliminate any sort of, uh, external, uh, imagery, impressions of, of bias. So that's really why we've stepped back from funding our own study at this point. Now, to, uh, to Sherry's question that she rightly brought up in regards to the Advisory Council. I'm not here to disparage the work that they're doing, um, but I do have to push back a little bit on the notion that they, that they've got this. They're, they're taking care of this stuff. The work really that they do is internal to Perpetua. It, it's not an, it's not an outwardly facing body. It's really a function of, of Perpetua and, and checking the boxes of the things that they need to check in order to get their permit satisfied. So it's an internal process to what they do. I used to run a nonprofit in Boise for 15 years. And some of the first things we did when we left a board meeting was we got the notes typed up and we posted them to our website. Transparency. We were fully open with what we did during our meetings. I can't find anything on the council's website other than a, a one-sentence, high-level subject of what was discussed at those meetings to indicate that meeting minutes were even taken, taken, let alone published. So, uh, as I stated in the last meeting, the work that we're proposing is completely publicly facing. It's engaged by a public body of elected officials. It's not sanctioned by a private business group. It's not sanctioned by, by the permit requestee. If, if the council is looking at this stuff, um, we'd love to see the RFP. We'd love to see what was in the RFP. We'd love to know who's contracting this information as PhD-certified economists. The take-home is that this study needs independence. It needs independence so that the public can feel that the folks that commissioned it were trustworthy, that the findings were trustworthy, apolitical, unbiased. So those are really the take-home messages. And then the other notion is that the time to do that work for Perpetua would have been when the DEIS was, was assembled. Not, not now. You know, they had, they've had five years to do that work. It didn't appear. Highland admitted it, they wrote it in the draft. It didn't occur. They kind of had their bite at that apple. Um, really, this whole thing sort of sits under the umbrella of good governance, right? Public officials being accountable, businesses that have huge stakes in the outcomes and to the general, general public. So that's sort of it on the, on the advisory board. Again, we're happy to answer questions, and that's what we're hoping to dedicate most of this meeting to. Um, the next piece I'd actually like to introduce is to bring to you all is, um, it's an investor presentation. And it's not, doesn't come, oh, do I need to request permission to approach the event? This is not actually a Perpetua investor relations packet. This investor relations packet is from a corporation, a Canadian corporation based in Vancouver called Stallion Gold. One of the important pieces to look at on this is a couple. First, I'd invite you to look at the, uh, at the page that shows the scope of the project. It's the second stapled page here. And it shows that it's actually larger than what Perpetua is proposing, the, the size of their claims, but it's right next to it, meaning that they're looking to backdoor all the work that we are contemplating. that they're looking to backdoor all the work that we are contemplating right now by Perpetua with a a tag-on project. You you may have noticed the prominence of this whole issue in recent media. Of course, there was a an excellent op-ed that was published in the Star News. Hopefully, you all read that. As well, there was a front-page paper last Sunday in Idaho Press, second-biggest paper in the state, front-page Sunday paper talking about this. So I think the point of bringing that up is there is increased scrutiny, increased attention that's going to be directed towards not just Perpetua, but the idea that there could be an entirely new mining district that happens as a result of this pioneering initiative that that is being done by by Perpetua right now. And I bring this up because, you know, the forest has a has a notion, what they call cumulative effects, right? And whether the legalese of that is met in terms of the EIS process, the point is you all, I believe, and we believe, have an obligation to look at the general idea of cumulative effects when it comes to all the things that we're just contemplating about this one proposal right now, right? And recognizing that that they're not closing the door after they open it. The door is going to be wide open for other companies to come in and further impact positively or negatively. We don't know. We would love the study to tell us. The services that are provided by government, the community services that are providing roads, so forth. So we just bring that up. And then the last point about Stibnite is that the the and I brought this up to Tom Grody the other day, was that they did make an omission in that piece in that they're actually, there may not be legal affiliations with with the two entities, but there actually are significant employment ties. Just three months ago, they hired the main geologist away from Perpetua and are now employing that person who's very familiar with Stibnite, with exploratory work at Stibnite, and with the 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 trajectory of the Perpetua project. Well, he is now lead geologist for Stallion.
For Stallion?
For Stallion.
Okay.
Yes, they hired him away. He had 10 years' experience at Stibnite with Perpetua and Midas. Yeah, I'll just I'll just give a quote. The Stallion CEO, his name is Drew Zimmerman, you'll probably be hearing that name quite a bit going forward, commented when they hired Austin Zinser, who's the geologist I mentioned. Zimmerman said, "His extensive experience working on the Stibnite Gold Project adjacent to Stallion's Horse Heaven Project, along with his technical skills in structural geology and resource modeling, will provide invaluable insight into Stallion's exploration efforts." So he is the lead geologist now for Stallion. And then the last piece, and this was Sherry wasn't here, but the last piece is the request from Ed and Elt in regards to the contractors.
Okay.
We've listed four contractors here, too. We've spoken to specifically about their availability, about their expertise in these areas of subject matter that we're talking about. And we feel really good about your concerns, addressing your concerns specifically, Elt, in terms of the timetable. Their take-home message to both from both organizations, the top two, Keylog and 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 Power and Associates, is that they could they're looking at about two months turnaround for this. I listed Keylog's specific response to us. That's what you see in the bulk of this. Because just to give Elt you an example of of the costs and the breakdown, again, to go to Rick's point, there are two major pieces of this. One is the the trends analysis, what is supporting our current economies. That's number one on the sheet. And number two is the economic effects of of anything, really, that could impact our current economies. So those are the two large chunks that they would be talking about. And then sort of the 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 cherry on top, the add-on that we didn't mention the other day was, should the county want this contractor to draft a comment letter for the EIS process specifically related to their findings? They can do that, and that's that's item three.
Jeff, what was your feeling from the U of I McCall Center? Because that's a really unbiased group.
It is. We don't know what their availability might be. You know, they, being affiliated with the university, there may be a lag in approaching them just because of the the fact that most people are away from from the institution right now. So again, these are four ideas, and we're eager to work with you all during the RFP process, drafting specifics of what ingredients are there and doing more outreach. But the preliminary work, I just want to contextualize it for you all to say, it's achievable, both within the timetable of the of the EIS process, NEPA process, and it's also achievable in terms of surely what you have as far as taxpayer interest concerns economically, you know, financially, and having their best interests represented.
Sure. Well, I appreciate the effort on getting some of these together.
My concern with that is you guys have talked over and over again about an unbiased report. If we accept your recommendations for someone to do this, it's not unbiased.
We we aren't necessarily making recommendations, Commissioner Mopin. We're we're simply trying to contextualize the concerns that Elt had in terms of, can this be done in time, and can it be done without spending hundreds of thousands of dollars?
However, you've also contacted these firms.
We have to try to get to ground truth.
Terms of biased situation.
We're we're not indicating a preference for a contractor. We're simply contextualizing what would be involved in this work in terms of time and money.
Well, and I think honestly, there are some things that you sent us that I don't think should be on the list, and there are some things I think we need to add to it. So there's kind of a middle ground. I think between the two of them, I think we could probably build a pretty good RFP.
Yep. So I have I have a question because you guys have made a statement, and it rings true to me. As an elected official, it is my responsibility to look at growth. But we also have Tamrac, we have Brundage's expansion, as well as the mines. So as an elected official, if I'm going to spend taxpayer dollars, it shouldn't be focused on one thing. It should be focused on, you know, I don't mind the concept of what we're trying to prove here, but I feel like it should be focused on what's happening in the region as a whole and not segmenting one little thing. Why are why are we looking at it? Why would I be responsible, as an elected official, to spend taxpayer dollars on something that's so focused on one project?
So thank you for your question. First, in general, the the first part of this, part one of this analysis, really doesn't have anything to do with Perpetua.
The trends analysis.
It's it's an analysis of how our economies have evolved over the past four or five decades, and it should actually further inform the decisions that you all make in regards to other large-scale developments in the county, right? And so we're viewing this as something that can be used by the county as a prism to look through and examine other initiatives that 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 come to your desks, right? So that's number one. Number two, the idea of, well, why are we singling out Perpetua right now? Because we have a a very important timetable that we're looking at in terms of providing comment. And all we're trying to do is find out what are the impacts, positive or negative. We're not presuming that, other than what the draft has already told us in terms of adverse impacts, we're not presuming any results of this finding. None of the 50 businesses, or the majority of the 50 businesses that said, yes, please do that study, are doing it because they're anti-mining, because they don't want this thing to happen. They're doing it because they want information that they can make decisions on for the future of their businesses.
Can I just reiterate that just for a moment, if I could?
Please come to the mic, Deb, so everybody can hear.
Okay.
Thank you.
You know, when I was when I spoke last week, I did speak to the fact that that the point that Jeff brought up about the economic study being good for the county in many other ways, it's going to provide a lot of information from a broad base. That trends analysis is really important. Now, the businesses are so busy right now trying to run their business. A lot of these businesses we spoke to don't have a lot of information about the mine. A lot of them didn't even have or or didn't know how to respond to the DEIS. So they do have a lot of questions economically. And I think if if we can work together and get a broad-based economic analysis performed, it's good for everybody. I I don't see how anybody could say no. I would think Perpetua would want to see this information as well. It's just a reasonable ask. It's reasonable.
We went through this when Tamrac was vaubau and started to come online, and people were concerned about that. The thing that we have to be careful of up here is if every big thing that comes along, do we have to spend this money to study each one? Do you understand what I'm saying? To me, that should be more of a developer-driven study, and we realize it's just going to be biased. It's always biased because they're paying for the study. But you can get the information that's going to tell you, here's the impact on your schools, here's the impact on your trash, here's the impact on your fire and EMS. And that data is usually provided, and it's really apparent to me that in the economic study that they did, they didn't really do one. It was very minimal by headwaters. It wasn't, and I think that part of our job is maybe we need to go back to them and say, hey, we want more in-depth, and we want you guys to pay for it. And we realize it's going to be slightly biased, but that still has pretty good information in it. But I agree with Sherry. I don't want to get to the point where we're doing all these big-time studies on every major thing that's going to happen in the Valley. Pretty soon, we're going to be doing it on subdivisions and developments, and and even though Brundage is in Adams County, it's going to affect our county the most. We understand that. They're going to receive the the value of the tax revenue, the benefit that way, but we're going to get a lot of the impact. Same thing we're dealing with with Warren and Seashore area. You know, we get the cost, but they get the benefit, kind of so to speak.
I would like to respond to, on the Stibnite Advisory. So full disclosure, I helped write that MOU. So when we did it, we spent 18 months with the communities. We're from Riggins Council, Cascade, Smith Ferry. All of us had elected official, and the Advisory Council has elected officials, all different types of individuals. So when you're saying that's work from inside the mine, I disagree with that statement. So they just did a full, totally unbiased water study because it was requested from the members of the community. We want to make sure that what you're telling us is true. And during that MOU and drafting that MOU, we made them find a financial vehicle, which ended up being the Stibnite Foundation, to pay for exactly this type of work. So the people on that Advisory Council right now, and I did reach out last week and said, would you guys entertain, you know, doing a study like this? And they said, come to the meeting. No one's asked us to do this type of work. So an independent study can be paid for by that, you know, by the person that's creating the issue, which is the mine.
Right, except we've already done that once.
You gave thought to them and asked them for the study?
No, no, no. Perpetua already commissioned the study.
This is not Perpetua. This is an Advisory Council.
I understand, but it's an arm.
Is made up by elected officials and people from each one of those communities that will be impacted. And this was put in place specifically to address the impacts.
And you said they had money, Sherry?
They do have money.
Yeah. What what we would suggest is that, for one, there there's a large community in McCall that's not part of that process at all.
Because they would not join. And we asked them, and I'm still passionate about that conversation.
That was a that was a a municipal, a decision that was made by elected officials in the municipality and with, for whatever reasons they chose. So number one. Number two, we do have council, we have New Meadows, we have Riggins. And so I would suggest that all of those officials and the towns that they represent, the residents of their communities, are going to benefit by the fact that you all are going to commission this study. I mean, are are they really saying we have all the information we need to know in Riggins about what this means for us? No. So the information that we gather, that is this public effort, publicly-funded effort, is going to get disseminated throughout Adams and Valley Counties for those municipalities to digest, to incorporate in their decision-making process and their position, however it ends up falling out. So this is only going to be a benefit for those communities that have already sort of signed on the on to the idea of collaboration, right?
Our taxpayers will pay for their information in Valley County. Sorry. Our taxpayers will pay for that, then, for information for Adams County?
Well, I I think that we also have representatives from Donley, Cascade on the council, too. Is that right?
But what you're asking is, is the tax base in Valley County to pay for this study?
I understand. It will be public information. Certainly, Adams County would would obviously be able to use that information as well. Now, you all, at your disposal, at your phone, at the other end of your phone, have relationships with Valley County, with Adams County commissioners that you could approach on this as well. So but, you know, I think if we zoom back and 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 maybe get out of this discussion about who does what and who pays for what, the the reality, Commissioner Mopin, about looking at Brundage or looking at Tamrac, we're talking about scale. We're talking about scope. We're talking about 6, 8,000 acres of our backcountry. That is is, if we stay on this trajectory and if we don't examine it, we are blessing the idea that there's going to be an enormous mining district out there. In Perpetua's own material, they call this the the region's largest open-pit gold mine. That's on an order of magnitude that's very different than a housing development, that touches the entire array of impacts potentially. It's very different than looking at a housing project, even looking at a ski area, an entirely new mining district that was actually on its way to being rehabbed, if you want to go back into the history of it, by the Nez Perce tribe.
We are so far behind right now on our meeting today.
Okay, yeah, no. So we're happy to answer any other questions you guys have. Yeah.
Well, and I think, you know, I looked briefly this weekend at the Stibnite group, and there are commissioners from other counties on it. There are city officials. They have money. Apparently, you guys tried to approach them or no? I don't know, but I mean.
Can I speak to that?
Sure.
Rick, you know, we are, we are a small group of business people, and we got a lot to do right now. I mean, this is, and we've put this together in four months. So five months, whatever. So I think that you asked for skin in the game, well, Elt. And and we're we're willing to be part of that skin in the game. We're hesitant to do that because it looks like bias.
We need to be unbiased, exactly.
So why not? Why not forge ahead and and do the study and then ask for ask for monies from these other communities?
That's that's the way I would probably approach this, is we, the county, would actually do the RFP and hire the contractor, get that bill, and go back to the public and say, okay, we want McCall City, Cascade, Donley, all the different groups, everybody throw in on this. And normally, you don't get that much, maybe a little, but you're you guys are the ones that are asking for this.
Yep.
And I kind of agree. I think there's some more information we need as as a county to really understand our impact. If you look at what's happened in the last 10 years, we're going up about 200 people a year in population. Stibnite's going to bring in, we don't know for sure, probably at least 500. So it's like almost a doubling of population in one year instead of a two-year process. How do we handle? How do we handle all those impacts? And how do we get ahead of it as far as, you know, we're going to have to bump up solid waste budgets? We're going to have to look at a lot of different things to handle that impact.
Hopefully, this study will give you a lot of those answers.
Well, but my thinking though, Rick, honestly, is this group was formed a long time ago of elected officials. They have money. I think we should go to them and ask them to do it. I think that's very appropriate personally. Ed, how do you feel?
Oh, man. I'm starting to digest all this.
Welcome to being a commissioner.
I'll say one more thing. Time is of the essence and then I'm going to say that.
Yep, well, one, I, this is unfortunate. We're running against the time thing here on this, and we really shouldn't be because it's an important discussion. And so I go back to number one, you know, we talked about this already. It was just an image. And this is where Mr. Commissioner Hasbrook has pointed out as well. And you guys have tried to answer this thing about an image of being pro or con for this project. Have to kind of deal with that. And that's where I think Commissioner Mopin's concerned is we pay taxpayers money to do this. Is that going to be viewed as a, you know, weighing in, taking sides? I was here a long time ago when we started talking about this. What is the, the group that, you know, the, that gets together and they, once a month, and then they have their made up of Adams County, Idaho County, McCall, not McCall, two, two, very important partners are not in that group. And that's the city of McCall and Valley County. And we argued at that time, when that group got together, that we're going to have funding for all these different communities at a certain level, depending on what their foundation could raise and all that kind of stuff, for support of those communities primarily. And it appeared to be buying support from those communities. And that's what we're having to do here to deal with that part of that question. And so I, my question is, is when we get this analysis, and we do have some somewhat experts in the room, I think, in this one, what's it, how's it going to weigh in with the Forest Service approval or denial of this? In other words, if just say that it comes back with economic analysis, it's going to ruin the area. Does that give the Forest Service, for instance, or the government agency that's going to approve this or deny it? Is it going to give them the fodder they need to go either way on it? What is it? In other words, what is going to actually be the effect of a result of the study on the approval or denial based on eighteen seventy-two mining laws, history of mining, and their involvement with communities and stuff? So again, you know, I guess we have to get back to what good, what is it going to do? Can you convince us that it's going to actually make a difference? Particularly that, but then also other developments around the county.
What's the outcome? What can we use this for?
And so.
I agree too. We don't have a decision on the mine. What I'm hearing you say is we've got this huge mining district being formed. That's the Forest Service decision tools. We have to look at it, how it hits the valley floor. And Jeff, I'm not, we are twenty-five minutes behind.
And so I don't, and I'm not. That statement's not necessarily weighing in on a vote. What it's saying is, is we do need to have, you know, some pretty good evidence that doing this study is going to help us, not only with that process, and it's obviously time-sensitive because you have to, you have to have it by a certain date, you know, in order to use it in that EIS process or SEIS process, whatever it is. So, and then, but going back to the other parts of it, yes, it'd really be good to know what this kind of stuff's going to do to our valley because we are going to be making other decisions. We're going to be talking roads, infrastructure, huge amounts of infrastructural permissions that would have to get to all those people. So yes, it will have, you know, there is good reason to have this kind of information. So, so.
And we are paying for a study of some of this later in the day as far as the county.
Yeah.
It is our.
So yes, and I think it just comes down to me is I'd love to see this information.
Sure, what do you mean, we're going to talk about this later today?
Again, we have to get into who pays for it and what's perception.
Which one?
The master's facility plan, comprehensive financial plan. They're going to be looking at what the mining impact's going to do too in our finance and our proposed facilities.
What do you guys want to do? Any information is good information.
Can I make one more? Can I just make one more comment?
Then we got to move on, guys, because we are way behind.
Right. You know, we knew this was a tricky endeavor before we ever embarked on it. We knew that it was going to be hard for a lot of businesses to sign on to this because they felt like they were going to be looked at as either pro-mine or against the mine. It's not what we're trying to do. All we're trying to do is to get answers to things that we do not have answers to. Those are really important. Those have all been laid out. Supplemental EIS is going to come out the end of the summer. And so you asked, Ed, what is going to happen then? If we have a comprehensive economic analysis in front of us and the businesses, the whole public has that, they are better informed to understand what that supplemental says. So that we're all better informed moving forward. Schools, again, the wages, the housing, it's, it's a big deal. And that study that was done didn't go far enough to address that. I think the legacy of that is, is going to lie with this council, the decision to, to kind of deal with that right now. But time is of the essence.
Would you agree? So time is of the essence, but why? Because this is trying to impact the Forest Service decision on the mine. If this came out afterwards and gave us all of the information that we need in order to make good decisions for what's going to happen in the future? Because we don't hold what happens in the future. Alls we can do is respond to whatever happens. So if we take the time to do it correctly and look at the entire valley and what's happening in the valley, tell me why it's time-sensitive. I would agree with you guys. We need this information and we probably should have done it a year ago. But now.
Yeah, why wasn't it done a year ago? I guess that's what I'm asking too, is why wasn't it? Why wasn't it broader in scope? Why was it so narrow? Why? That's what I'm asking too. These are time-sensitive things. We have, we have to pay attention to it now, before.
Why is it time-sensitive?
I think you can answer that question.
Well, I think, Sherry, the time-sensitive to me is that we get phase two of Stibnite. This new company comes in, we're going to be ahead of it for that one. I don't think we're going to really influence the Forest Service's decision on whether or not Stibnite is going to get a permit or not. But I still think it's good to have all the information we can have to know that this is what it's going to do to schools, roads, fire, sheriff, trash, the structural, infrastructure things that we have to deal with.
And I agree with that, but I think it's important for us to include what's going to happen when Tamrec's approved? What happens with Brundage? You know, it's a whole conversation for the entire community. That's my opinion.
And I think Tamrec did a lot of that study for us. They told us how many kids are going to be in school and how many people.
And they did the pretty big economic analysis. But to Ed's point, what are we going to do with this when we, if we have it? And if it's good or bad? Well, you are Valley County. You three are Valley County and you get to say something. Will they listen? I, I can't answer that, but you get to say something. And other community members get to say something and they get to respond to the SEIS when this, when we have this information in our hand.
But we have responded. You're, you're making an assumption we're not. We are. We have ongoing conversations about all of the facilities.
Yeah, but you don't have all the information. But I, you know, I'd like to see you make a motion. I want you to make a motion and vote on this today. Thank you.
Okay. I know we're kind of got up against the time thing here and I don't like being that way for this important a decision. But I, I'm, I'm of the opinion that we probably, as a community, need this information that you're seeking. Okay, the, I guess the challenge gets to be, okay, it comes down to money. Who pays for it? What's the perception in it? So I'm of the opinion that the county could probably be a partner in this kind of thing, but it has, we have to be careful about that one too. We would probably drive the, what do you call it, the request for proposal or what? But I've got a question here. What do we got to lose? What do we got to gain? And I don't want to lose confidence of the people in county that we're looking at this seriously. And with them, with every side and taken into consideration, you're making an argument that we don't have as good analysis of the social aspects of this as we should. Okay? May or may not come, the, the actual product may or may not affect the SEIS, DEIS. Is that right? So do we need it otherwise? And I think based on some of the other stuff that's going on, we probably do need that information. Can we come to an agreement on how it gets paid for and who, who drives it?
Can we put it in a budget? We don't have this in a budget anywhere.
Yeah.
So where does it, you know, I mean, if it's paid for right now, there's.
You'd have to take it out of, you know, Pilt or General Fund Reserve Budget or something. But to me, whether or not this affects the Forest Service's final decision, to me, even if we're too late to affect that, it's still valuable knowledge for us to have.
Yeah, I think that's kind of where I'm kind of going with that.
I don't think we're going to get it back in time for the SEIS, honestly. I hope we do. They say they will, but it's still valuable information for us. What I've got to figure out is how we're going to pay for it.
Yeah.
And asking other partners to pay for it too.
And we, I.
So we did a, we did a gap analysis through U of I and they did a great job with the gap analysis.
Yeah, I just wonder if we could go to the Stibnite group and ask for funding from them.
I don't think we should.
So, Mr. Chairman, can we, I guess I'm willing to make a, an emotion on this one that we seek this, I guess pursue this study with the county taking a lead in the study, but it, with a caveat that it has to, that we have to develop some sort of a partnership with this for, for funding going forward. And I'm not too sure how we're going to do that, but what probably means that we have to get our people, like maybe Brian and some folks involved, and coming together with a request for, or what is it, what is it called? Request for.
For proposal. But you could also, Ed, solicit the different chambers, the different cities, the different counties, anybody that wants to participate in the cost of this.
Because I, I see that in there as being really important.
Stibnite goal, yeah. We'll send them a letter asking for any funding and see where it goes.
Does that make, make sense as a, as a motion?
The other challenge, just like you guys are saying, your things are so busy right now, is writing up the RFP. That's a lot of work and there's some good ideas coming off of this, but I don't know who really does that for us.
Doug does, the clerk.
Doug does? Well, good. Hey, Doug.
I would request collaboration probably with our prosecuting attorney's office though too.
And I think between the four or five of us, we could come up with some pretty good questions to ask.
You do have a lot of information.
Yeah. So let's go back to the motion.
Okay.
Does that make sense? That we, we move forward to this as requested, but we also are going to collaborate with all, all, as many partners as possible in finding, funding this and setting timelines, writing a reasonable request for proposal. And that would be, I guess.
I would second that if you will add that this is going to be looking at multiple projects that are happening throughout the county. So it's a full study.
So, yes.
Impact of things that are happening.
That, that would be, that's the bottom line is things it does have to consider an overall economic picture of the county and how these things, any things, any of these things actually fit in on effect. And it hopefully will help us moving forward to make decisions about various other aspects of governance that we see down the road.
So is there a cap to what you'd be willing to spend on this? Or just find financial partners to support this? Because right now, honestly, I mean, we are working on multiple areas. Looking at our planning and zoning stuff, you know? We've talked about having to hire counsel there. We are working on, right now, this afternoon, we're going to approve a financial analysis, master facility plan. That's going to cost a hundred thousand bucks from somewhere.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, there's multiple things here that we're going to have to be working on.
So you have good questions. So do we put a, a Kennedy ceiling on what we're willing to spend? We haven't talked a lot about that, but I remember in the last meeting, we talked about the, an estimate of maybe forty or fifty thousand dollars for the project. And I would say that maybe it's appropriate for us, considering that we are going to be working in a kind of a more of a broad-based collaborative effort with this, that we may be, are willing to spend maybe thirty, thirty-five thousand or whatever is reasonable or that. Does that make sense?
That's too high for me.
Is it?
But I have only one voice. You guys want to spend that much? Go for it.
And that's, we're getting somatics now really.
These are the tough ones all the time. You know, the other issue that we're facing and everybody's facing is that we've got to bump salaries. So all this could go away if we get to the end of the budget this year and we don't have enough to even bump salaries.
Yeah.
Keep people working. So there's a lot of ifs and what ifs in there. I'm almost at the point where I don't care if we get it done by the SEIS. I mean, if we could take our time and get it done right, still have the information. It doesn't have to be done by October first, but will still give us valuable information. I don't think that we need to rush this. Trends analysis is, is, it's a lot of work. We can all just look around and see what the trend is, but.
So Sherry did.
How about we?
Put something on it that, you know, per budget, we research the costs?
What we're going to do is we're going to send an RFP out to these companies and ask them how much they're going to charge. And then we can make the final financial decision after we see what the bids are.
That works for me. And, and what partners we can bring to the.
Okay, so. So basically, it gets back to the motion. We won't set, we didn't set any particular number on it. And with it, but we'll start the process and we'll move forward with it.
Okay.
Are you okay? Sherry, you still second that?
I'll second that.
Okay.
Moved and seconded. So before I call for a vote, I think it's important for everybody to under, everybody to understand that we're trying to do this in an unbiased view. And everybody's biased. Everybody is for and against on the mining site. And we have to stay in the middle neutral. So we may use some of your companies. We may go outside and look for other PhDs in economics that could bid on this as well. Personally, I kind of like the University of Idaho because they're really very knowledgeable about the mining aspect. Because that's kind of their forte up there. But as long as we can keep it unbiased and open and transparent, I think it'll work for all of us and hopefully get the information we need. So I moved to second in all favor. Please say hi. Hi. Hi, motion carries. And we'll keep you guys in the loop, kind of where we are.
Thank you very much.
And see what we can get done for the end of summer.
Mr. Chairman, just a matter for the record, if I could read, reread the motion that was made. Commissioner Allen made a motion to pursue an impact study with Valley County taking the lead with reviewing the opportunity for partnerships, for funding, moving forward to conduct a request for proposal for an impact study to be completed to include an overall economic picture of the expansions within Valley County.
Boy, that's pretty broad.
Well, we're going to have to tighten it up on the RFP process.
Yeah, I think we should tighten it up just pertaining to the Perpetua program. I don't think we need to throw in.
Can I rescind my second?
It's a. It's, for one thing, like the Brundage thing, it's just so pre right now. I don't even know how you would go in and.
They're selling lots up there.
Judge that.
I think it really should focus on the reason, the, the, the project that they brought to us. It'll have benefits to other projects, but it will, we should probably focus on that one. Yeah.
It wasn't the motion.
You captured that?
It wasn't the motion. Uh, clerk?
It wasn't the motion. So you want to redo your motion?
Can you define what a big project is?
We have, we have three large projects right now. We have a mine, well, and now that we have an additional mine, you know, we should require them to sign the same MOU that we required, Perpetua to sign, and put something in place for them to. But Tamrec's out there and Brendage is out there and they're all impacting our economy. So, you know, I'm one voice. You guys can vote on whatever you want, but that, that's not what you have right now in writing. So if you guys are going to amend that, then you need to do it.
We did, I think, I think we really do need to focus on a specific project. And of course, the other stuff's peripheral, the other benefits or whatever, or peripheral. So I'd like, I'd like to suggest that we focus on the targeted project at this point for this particular study.
And Sherry's not agreeing with that, Ed, so I got to make up my mind if I want to second that. I think like in Brundage, which is in a different county, we don't have a lot of influence.
No.
On Adams County. But hopefully we can encourage those commissioners to ask for an economic study that the developers got to provide and not taxpayers this time. I think that's where we messed up this time.
The difference in that, in these projects is that Brundage has been approved by Adams County Commissioners. They have the approval rights to do that. Tamrec is going to be Forest Service. The mines are Forest Service. So we don't have that same, you know, I mean, yes, they could ask for that.
We could ask the Forest Service to do an impact statement from Tamrec. We could ask Adams County to do an impact statement on Brundage.
Yeah, and I think that's appropriate, you know?
But I think in this case, we should just make it particular to Perpetua, honestly.
Yeah, that's kind of, and I think we have to go back to our motion and try to clarify that. If that's, it sounds like a point of clarification is in order. And we could either retract the motion and make it, and clear that up.
My concern with that, and again, you guys can vote on whatever you want. My concern to that is you were spending taxpayer dollars specifically for one thing. And you, you guys will listen to the taxpayers the same way that we all will, one way or another.
So Doug, we didn't vote on that last motion, right?
Yes, sir.
And you're pulling your second?
I'll hold my second. If you guys are.
That motion's off the table. So Ed, you want to restate your motion in a different way?
Okay. Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we initiate this economic study as requested by Headwaters. And it just, this particular study does need to focus on the project that they brought to us, the mining project and its effect on Valley County and surrounding area. So I don't know how else to do it. I think that's where I have to go.
Simpler the better. Ed, do I have a second? Are you not going to second that? Okay, so I'll go ahead and second that. I think it's important that we have businesses from Valley County coming in and asking us to do this. They do pay taxes to the county. I think it's an appropriate ask. And I think it's going to be great information for all of us. All of us realizing it's probably not going to impact the decision on Stidnike, but it's going to help us maybe figure out some different fee structures or impact fees or something that we can do to handle that growth. And I think it's appropriate. So we got a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And you want to go down as opposed or you're going to?
Oppose.
And one opposed?
Opposed, yeah.
Motion carries. So we'll see where this goes.
Okay. Quit asking us to do this kind of stuff.
Thank you, guys. Have a great day.
Thank you all for your time and consideration.
We're going to take a really quick break and then we'll get back on our agenda, which we're about an hour behind on.